...
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Council Chambers. Welcome to City Hall. And welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, March 26th, the year is 2002. I believe we have a quorum. The City Council will continue Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Although I will announce that this Friday, there will be no council. You're always welcome to join us in participating in council meetings here in Council Chambers. We can talk to you via live, via webcast, on the Internet from the city's homepage, live from home, on your cable station, Channel 35, or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, please call. Bernsen Glaner, Garcetti Haan, Holm, Labaj, Vizkowsky, Pacheco, Harry Reyes, Ridley Thomas, White, Sain, Padilla, all members present in the quorum, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First order of business, please. Approval of minutes. Mr. Wallace moves, and Mr. Holden seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Ms. Labaj moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. Inasmuch as it's the first Tuesday in the month, let the flag salute. Do we have somebody arranged for this morning, Mr. Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of.
If not, then if I can ask Councilmember Misakowski. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Stand. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have also, this has been Tuesday in the first meeting of the week. In addition to our flag salutes, we have a moment of inspiration. I believe we have Reverend Atterbury here to lead us from the podium.
Let me say good morning to you. Good morning to the council. To all the citizens of Los Angeles who have come to do business with the council. I am Reverend W. Atterbury, pastor of Mount Sinai Missionary Baptist Church in San Pedro. Our church is seated in the 15th district. Council Lady Janice Haan. And I say a special thanks to her for this invite. I am blessed. This being in the midst of the seat of power of the greatest city in the world, has its overwhelming effect. And that word "blessed" in the Greek language says "oha", happy I am. So I'm happy this morning to be in your midst. Before I go further, I would just like to thank Mrs. Hicks, the lady who picked me up and brought me here this morning. It was very kind of her to do that, and I am thinking about having her come talk to my deacons on how to treat the pastor, because she knows how to treat Mrs. Haan. Before I go further, let me say this. I'm a senior citizen. I want to ask the council a favor. During this work, if you can do everything humanly possible to make our last days days more easier, we would appreciate it very much. If you keep breathing, you too shall be a senior citizen. Amen. September 11th, I'm supposed to give a little inspiration speech here. September 11th was a devastating moment for our country and not only our country, but the city of Los Angeles. And I was reading in St. John's 16th chapter and the second verse. It says that they will kick you out of their synagogues. And they will kill you, thinking that they are doing God a favor. And so I thought about the terrorists who were doing this. This is part of their theory about this great war that they have committed against America that they are doing God a favor. But in that faith, it says, "Be not terrified." They say, "No." "Let your hearts be troubled; not be afraid." And I come this morning to say that prayer is the answer. Prayer is the answer. Everything you do should involve prayer. When you don't know what to do, you should pray. As a youngster, when I was very immature in my ministry, I used to pray that God would give me a formula to cure cancer, because my father passed away with that disease. And I prayed that prayer often. And then one day, I was praying that prayer. And the Holy Spirit spoke to me. And said that this is a foolish prayer. How do you think that God would give you the formula to heal cancer? When there are doctors dedicated to becoming doctors and lawyers and scientists to deal with these diseases that affect our country. So don't pray that prayer anymore. So I don't do it. Many of us, we... I got one minute, then I want to say this, but I got to say this. I came to say this. That we pray for things that we're not qualified to receive. And so those are foolish prayers that many of us do that. So I come here today, because I'm qualified, to tell you about prayer. And I ask that you include that in your daily prayers. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, I come this morning standing in the midst of the governing body of the greatest city in the world, asking that you will humble their spirits and fill their hearts with compassion for the work they are called to do. And them to promote the American dream of equal opportunity for all people, regardless of race, creed, or color. Increase their faith in their philosophy of life, their concept of human dignity. And Father God, sanctify our love for country, for our city. Inspire us to work together to make this God's own country by living like God's own people. These things we ask in the precious name of Jesus. And we all agree by saying amen. God bless America, and God bless Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Items numbers eight and nine on the regular agenda. There's a request to continue those matters one day until March 27th. Members' request to continue items eight and nine without objection. Item number 23, a request that that matter be continued one week until April 2nd. Request to continue item number 23 for one week. And item number... Without objection. Item number 34 is a closed session. A city attorney has requested to be withdrawn from the council agenda, referred to the city attorney. Request on item number 34, without objection, referred to the city attorney's office. Request on item number five on the agenda is the appointment of young S. Kim to the Central Area Planning Commission. There is a planning management committee report recommendation on this matter. Okay. Is the commission nominee present? If I can ask him to come forward, please. Consideration of this nomination has been held in committee. Members wishing to ask any questions, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Councilmembers and colleagues. I just rise to thank Mr. Kim. Please. I just rise to thank Mr. Kim for his good work, for working with him as a planning commissioner, and hopefully together we can continue building up our city in a positive way. Just want to thank you for your services. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Seeing one, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to welcome you, because I understand you're a resident of CD 13. And I wanted to ask you just a question about density in the central area in general. Often, there are folks who look towards the inner city or the urban core as the area where we can add density and add housing. If you could just speak to how you would look at infrastructure requirements to match any new density that would be added to the central area. Love to hear your thoughts on that.
I think one thing that definitely has to be considered is the layout of the urban planning for that particular area. Certain areas may have a certain amount of density, and it may be able to accommodate more depending on the street planning as well as the layout of the current existing buildings there. That's something that definitely has to be looked into, and before any decisions can be made, I think specific environmental studies as well as planning use studies need to be done before that answer could be given. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be recognized?
Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the confirmation of Mr. Kim. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Congratulations, you are confirmed. Thank you for serving the city. Next item, please. Mr. President, item number 23 was just continued one week until April 2nd. Excuse me, yeah, April 2nd. And I missed voting, it should have been April 3rd. Item number 23, without objection. April 3rd is the date for continuation of item number 23. Next item, please. Item number 11 is appointment of city officials to extend the temporary appointment of Arturo Peña as an interim executive director of Human Relations Commission. There is a committee report on this matter. Item number 11 now before us. Public hearings haven't been held in committee. Members wishing to be recognized. Item number 11. Mr. Labaj.
As you know, Mr. President, we had this in committee, and I know our committee... Chairperson is not here this morning, but we recommend approval of this fine individual for this very important commission. Mr. Peña, thank you. Seeing no further members wishing to be heard, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Does that complete the city officials?
Did you pass seven yet? You haven't considered... I haven't considered seven yet. No, we have not.
Mr. Clerk, is that all the city officials for today? Yes, it is. Okay, before we sit with the balance of the agenda, Mr. Labaj, did you have an introduction to make today?
So there was a very nice invocation this morning by the... We had a very nice presentation from San Pedro, but he spoke about the greatest city in the world, Los Angeles. We have some of the greatest people in the world. What I loved about the Academy Awards is when John Travolta talked, he spoke about the four language films that won, and then he said they're all the official languages of Los Angeles. We are a great diverse city, and we have great people here. Great people visiting us this morning. We have the ambassador from Taiwan. Ambassador Wong Young, please stand, please, and be recognized. And he is with the distinguished delegation that has great commitment to the great first district, and I'm going to pass the ball over to the great councilman Ed Reyes for the introduction of the others. Thank you, Honorable Tom Labaj. You know, our Councilman Labaj has a great history of working with a whole group of people throughout the world. I want to thank him for bringing our guests in today. I want to thank Mary Chu. She is the supervisor board chairwoman for the Chinese Consolidated Banal Association. Thank you for coming. He is the president of the Chinese Consolidated Banal Association, Michael G. Chung, who is also with the Banal Association vice chairman, but also the vice president of Long Kong Family Association. So I want to thank them for being here. As Tom has said, we are blessed with a strong city because of our diversity, and I want to thank them for all the good work. Thank you so much.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'd like to also send a welcome to the delegation. I have experience of visiting Taipei, Taiwan. At the time that Sheng Kai Shek's son passed away, at that time I was there. And then I know it's a very exciting governmental procedure there. From time to time, I watch you on television. And you're very committed to your cause, to your purpose. Almost like somebody's god. They tumble over one another over here once in a while. So when we watch you in action over there, we say, "That's good. You believe what you're doing." You take it right to the end. Welcome to Los Angeles, and I'm sure you enjoy business. I'm sure that you'll enjoy your visit.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Mr. Ambassador, I had the opportunity to meet with you a couple days ago. Welcoming you to our beautiful city. I've never been to the far east, but I hope someday to visit. We have a wonderful sister city program, and we welcome you and the delegation to our beautiful city. Hopefully, we can come and visit and have an exchange of business and opportunities. But a warm welcome to you and your guests who are with us this morning. Thank you. Are there members wishing to be recognized on this introduction? If not, I want to thank Mr. Labaj and Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda, please. Mr. President, items numbers one through four on the regular agenda are items noted for public hearing. And I do have cards on item number three. Let's call that special. Do not have cards on items one, two, and four. Members wishing to call any specials on items one, two, and four? Seeing none, I believe we can open the roll on item number four.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote. And the appropriate action for items one and two is to open the public hearing and to continue the matter to April 16th for continued consideration as your ordinances. Next item, please. Items numbers six through 14, with the exception of eight, nine, and 11, which have been acted on. Items whose public hearings have been held. Okay, item six through 14 now before us. Members wishing to call any specials. Mr. Holden calls item seven special. Any other specials? Item six through 14. Items eight, nine having been continued. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Item six being an ordinance, we do have all members present. Next item, please. Items numbers 15 through 33 on the regular agenda are items whose public hearings have not been held. Okay, 15 through 33 now before us. I do not have requests for members of the public to be heard on these items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Items 15 through 33. Item 23 has been continued. Members, any specials? Mr. Reyes. Mr. Council President, items 20 and 22, please. Twenty and 22, call special by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, ask item 32 to be sent to Budget and Finance Committee.
Request for item 32 to be referred to Budget and Finance. Mr. Zain wishes to call 32 special. Did you wish to call it special, or, Mr. Zain, do you have a problem with this being considered in Budget and Finance Committee?
Mr. Zain, do you have a problem with this being considered in Budget and Finance Committee?
Okay, request that you'll refer that item to both the Budget and Finance Committee and personnel. Is there an objection to that? Seeing none. Item 32 is... So referred. Any other specials? Twenty-one. Mr. Holden? Yes. Twenty-one, call special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those items are approved. Next item, please. Items numbers 37 through 48 on the supplemental agenda are items whose public hearings have not been held. I do have a card on item number 44. Let's call that special. Do not have cards on the balance of the items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Thirty-eight called special by Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Fourth with on 48, please. Next item, please. Items numbers 35 and 36 are closed session. Items wish those to remain on the desk. Let's hold those on the desk. The first special is item number three. Let's call special, and a special member of the public wishes to be heard. Okay, item number three now before us. Item noted for public hearing, the council calls forward at this time Kyo Tashima to be followed by Rosemary DeMonte and George Abrahamian. Mr. Tashima, are you here? There she comes.
President Padilla and members of the Los Angeles City Council. I am Kyo Tashima, a resident and small business owner in the Los Feliz area. I have owned and operated Maison Place, a gourmet kitchen, cookware, and gift store for 20 years. My fellow business owners have been elected to be president of the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District for the past few years. I appear before you today in that capacity. I here to let you know that our bid is running smoothly and successfully. Even with our limited budget, we have accomplished a lot in improving the business improvement in our neighborhood. We have very broad-based support within the community, and I am confident that the vast majority of merchants in the Los Feliz area support our bid. With the continued support of the city and fourth district councilman Tom Labaj, we anticipate many more accomplishments in the coming year. I thank you for the opportunity to make this brief statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rosemary DeMonte.
Hello, I am also a business person in the Los Feliz bid, and I've been there for three years. And in that three years, I have not even been assessed one time. And so I know how difficult it is to do everything that everybody would love to see done in a bid, and we have to really get it together to get all the funds necessary. And thankfully, we do have a councilman that seems to be very involved and wants to see a better village and business district, and we hope we can continue onward. Thank you.
Mr. Brumman.
I'm Georgie Brumman, owner of a restaurant in the Los Feliz Village area. I'm former president of the Business Association. We had worked very hard to make the bid a reality, and we're very proud to report. We have been able to achieve quite a lot of things in the past couple of years, and with the help of Tom Labaj, we are hoping to achieve a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Close this public comment on item number three. Members wishing to be heard on item number three. Oh, we have two cards that were just submitted. Continuing the public comment period, then, Lisa Lofton and David Goodman.
My name is Lisa Lofton. I am a councilmember on the Los Feliz Business Improvement District. I am a new member and a new business owner in Los Feliz. I've been an active member for about just under a year, and so far, I feel like my work on the Business Improvement District has been very successful and a positive effect on the business community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. David Goodman to be followed by Donna Swig Eventoff.
My name's David Goodman. I'm a resident and a small business owner of Los Feliz, and I'm proud to be involved and associated with the BID committee. I've been in business for six years in Los Feliz and have prospered and blossomed in the area. And some of it has to do with the fact that we're organized, that the business community is organized, and we're able to approach the city with needs and other organizations. And anything that helps a community stay organized and better itself is a good thing, at least I think so. And I'm glad that we have the support of Tom Labaj, who's also a customer and a friend, and I hope that the council will see fit to extend our charter. Thank you.
My name is Donna Swig Eventoff, and my husband are owners of the Wizard of Art and Art School located in Hillhurst in the Los Feliz area. And I'm just here to support the Business Association and the BID, and have served on the board of the BID for a year now. And I am proud to do anything that I can to help the Los Feliz business area stay focused and have a successful business there.
Thank you very much. Close the public comment on item number three. Mr. Labaj.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We're a city of great neighborhoods, and Los Feliz is one of the great ones. And these business people, every day in and out, work hard to improve their area, and the support of this bid will help them even more. An attraction for not just the neighborhood of Los Feliz, but for all the community and the community and far. It's fun to see... I was there the other night at the Dresden Room, and there were people from all over the region, and I wanted to make sure everything was well, and it looked well because of the work that all of you are doing. So I just asked all members to abort and thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labaj, Mr. Kerry.
There have been no protests received on the renewal process, so the council is free to adopt the ordinance that is before you today.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Item number seven, call special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden, item number seven.
Members, the department should come to the table, explain what they're doing and why they're doing it. The city... They should stand around, they should...
Hold your time while the staff comes up. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, councilmembers, what we have before you is an amendment to the rate ordinance. This is on a parallel generation rate structure that was closed in October 1999 to new customers. What we're doing is putting a termination date for all the existing customers that are under that rate structure. There's approximately 30 customers currently receiving service under that rate structure.
Well, you're not telling the whole story. Some of these customers generate their own energy, is that correct? Do we have a reciprocating agreement with them if they have a surplus? And what we do with the surplus, that we add to the surplus that we have? Tell them.
This class of customers, they all own some level of stealth generation. Either they can supply 100% of their needs or some portion of their needs. Those that can provide excess generation, the Department of Water Power does pay them for that service when they supply the energy back to the department.
Now, my question once again, we have more energy we produce than we need, DWP, and we are selling it off, some of it. Now, when we buy, when the customer produces excess, we have to buy that, and then we have to... Then we turn around and sell that, their surplus, plus our surplus. What to do for DWP? Do we sell it for more money or less money? Do we buy from our customers?
We currently buy excess energy per federal requirements, and we pay them no more than it would cost us to generate ourselves, and that is a floating number.
And what do we sell it for?
Currently, we sell it to our customers as part of our retail line.
Do we sell it for less, then we pay forward from our customer?
No.
Less? Not less. Do we include our stranded debt and everything that we're on the line for in terms of offset the cost?
The calculation used to provide the energy credit back to those customers is based on our system production cost at the time.
All right. Would you say that... Were we sued on this, yes or no?
We were not sued on this, but the date was determined to terminate this rate based on a settlement with one of these providers of energy.
It was not litigated?
No, this was a settlement.
It was a settlement, not litigated. And this is what we agreed to? About to agree to. All right.
Okay. Any other members wishing to be heard on this side? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item number seven. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please. Next item, please. Item number twenty, call special by councilmember Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues. I just rise to commend the Housing Department for their enforcement, organization efforts and for their efforts in reducing the backlog. Their work towards a fee-supported enforcement structure significantly reduces the impact on the city's general fund. And I just want to say that they have worked very hard. And I just want to thank you for the good work. And I just hope it's a great opportunity to articulate those thoughts. And again, thank you to the Housing Department.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be recognized on this item. On this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, I think there's an amendment we need to add. Do you have it? To this technical amendment? If we ask the mayor to unfreeze the positions, it's part of what we need to technically do to see this through. It's totally in line with the intent. But if we can add a direction for the mayor to unfreeze the positions as well. Your suggestion.
Thank you. Have we received that, Mr. Clerk? Okay. So amendment being circulated, Mr. Garcetti? An amendment being circulated? Verbal amendment being offered. Clarifications of the council that is unfreezing the positions. Mr. Holden.
Well, we had the city attorney weigh in on this budget finance. Who actually does the unfreezing. We want to make sure everybody unfrees it just in case it's also the mayor that unfrees it. So the verbal amendment would be to the mayor as well as the city council unfreeze the positions. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members of the council. This was getting out of control. The recommendation is that we look at enforcement program being increased from a dollar to two dollars, which is for a total of twenty-four dollars a year per unit. This, one hundred fifty thousand units. That's three years they are expecting. This is passed on to the tenants. And the kind of rate control program we have, we increase more than four percent. This is the hundred percent. The tenants are expected to pay. I think it's kind of productive. And it's a regressive tax being imposed on many tenants who can least afford to pay this additional money. This was not the intent when it was first, when this audit was first approved. I think we should stay on course where we are, even though some of these units are not being inspected. We must maintain us in, focused on this. Okay, this was initially inspected. Took the position that, the argument against this ordinance was that it's circumvented proposition thirteen, imposed a tax on the people without their right to vote on it. The court still stood by us, but not for this amount. And it was not our intent initially when we litigated the matter. And maybe you're aware of this and maybe you're not. I don't know. But I think that this is an item that we ought to hold on the table to tomorrow. Mr. President, members of the council. Till I can get more clarification on it. And make maybe some suggestions about how we proceed from here. We got this hundred percent increase and also this written escrow program that we have in place.
Mr. Garcetti.
I would agree with you, Mr. Holden, in terms of, I'll wait till you're ready. I would usually agree with you. In this case, first of all, it doesn't actually do anything in terms of increase here. It is just merely a report back. And in Housing Committee, we had this. And one of the reasons that I think the Housing Committee unanimously felt comfortable about this is that the usual renters advocates, Inquilinos, CEOs, all the groups that would be themselves, because they're the lowest income of all renters in the city, actually themselves were in favor of this. Because it was only a dollar a month in terms of being able to get. It is a doubling, but it went from one dollar to two dollars. Even though this is not what we're voting on colleagues today. So I would rather not have that week when the report comes back. We can have this discussion. It's important to move on these positions as quickly as possible. We also have the opportunity then to hear from them. Just when the report is back on whether we should consider this. And this is something that Department Association and renters advocates who rarely agree on anything, both agree is a good idea. But all we're doing with this is finding out information and getting a report back. We're not approving any increases to anybody today. So I would respectfully ask for it to go forward today. And we can discuss that at the appropriate time.
Mr. Garcetti. Who protests the most? Who's not at your meeting, the ones that are only contacted, attended your meeting, who have advocated and are supporting this program? There are hundreds and hundreds and thousands of tenants out there. Are not even aware, what we're considering. What we will do or about to do. And they don't get upset about it until they see the bill.
Well, you can be assured that when we actually bring back just that information, not even the move to do something with it, that we will have as wide an announcement about that, the same public posting we always do. And anybody that you think voice is missing, we will rely on your office to make sure that they are brought into that debate too. Because so far across the board, we have just heard that one thing. So we'll look forward to you being a partner with that at the time when that information comes out.
Mr. Garcetti. We will learn that after the fact. It's usually too late. It's after the fact. When you learn after the fact, it's usually too late. But in any case, this is something I never supported in the first place. Because I thought it was a taxation without order to people. And it's a regressive tax, especially on the people who can least afford to pay seniors and certain citizens. And we have to be mindful of that, at least I think so.
I agree that we have to be mindful. This is the last thing. These are the very same renters who can least afford to have the sort of apartment conditions that led to, among other things, the Echo Park apartment collapse. They can least afford to be living in conditions that are substandard in order to get the human infrastructure to ensure that those issues, not an extra dollar a month, but that the issues of whether or not they actually live in safe apartments is there, is really what we're keeping our eye on. So we appreciate them, but we'll look forward to partnering with you, making sure that all that testimony has come to bear. But I see that your button's already pressed again.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Your response, Mr. Garcetti.
The people who are living in those substandard housing was something that we were inspecting before this program was put into effect. So wait, wait. So that cannot be an argument in favor of increasing the fee one hundred percent. Because those places will be identified. The tenants will call on a daily basis and complain about the substandard housing. Where it becomes a ripoff is that those houses that are not substandard, where tenants are not complaining, where they are totally satisfied. If you put all your effort, if you have enough money today, you put all your efforts in inspecting substandard housing, you can do that every year. You can do that every year. Every five years, hopefully, you can rotate around the city. And even since this program has been in effect, every single apartment unit has not been inspected. And yet the tenants have been paying. So, you know, slip shot.
Okay, this matter is now, Mr. Clerk, what is before us?
Was there a second to the motion to continue it one day? Then what is before you is the committee report.
All right. The committee report has amended it before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. That matter is approved. Next item.
Item number twenty-one, call special by councilmember Holden.
Madam President, before we go, item number twenty-one. And let me buy some time for Mr. Holden, wherever he is. So there he is. Can I move forthwith, number six?
Certainly. Forthwith on item number six. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden on item twenty-one.
President, members, are moving this domestic violence program to another organization. Somebody can tell us about that. Why it's not working, was the consequences of it? How bad and good it's been? And why we're making this, taking this action?
Twenty-one. Mr. Holden deals with the city agreements with Watts Health Foundation. Twenty-one deals with the city agreements with. Okay, so transfer of agreements.
Yeah, well, why? Why is he, Watts?
Is there?
Watts Health Foundation. Not doing a good job? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Penny, do you want to come forward? Oh, and the. Do you want to explain the matter, Mr. Penny?
Madam President, members of the council, Gary Pennington managed the Housing Department. Watts Health Care is in receivership. They have an HMO that was taken into receivership. They're going out of business.
Watts Health? Going out of business?
Yes. And we need to transfer the two domestic violence shelters to an operator. Genesis is a very good operator. In addition, CDD is also transferring their operating funds. There is no choice in this matter.
So it's something that if we go through the courts as the receivership?
Yes.
CDD, you want to comment on this?
Just that the Watts Health Foundation had been in our system for more than twenty years, providing successful service. And because of the conservatorship that they're currently placed under by the state home managed healthcare, they are required to only serve right now in the HMO area. And we'd have to give up these shelters. And that's the reason that we are transferring them over to.
But up until now, they've done a pretty decent job.
Yes, excellent.
So no, the ladies, the women have not been neglected. I mean, their request for services.
We have no program issues with.
No complaints. So from that standpoint, Watts Health Foundation did an excellent job except for the fact they're in receivership. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. This clearly was an unfortunate thing to have happened. And as came forth, Watts Health Foundation has been a contractor with the city for many, many years, doing an excellent job with domestic violence shelters. Fortunately, last August, Watts Health Foundation went into receivership and were told that they would be unable to continue to run the shelters. There's also a shelter that's being constructed, which is also part of why we need to do this quickly. So Genesi is an organization in South Central Los Angeles that also has an excellent track record. And actually, Watts Health Foundation was one of those who suggested that Genesi be the organization that picked up the running of the domestic violence shelter and to pick up the construction of the new one. We need to do this quickly to make it happen so that no services are lost to the women who are most in need in my district as well as council district eight. So I asked for your approval of this. It's a good transaction. It's taking something that was a tragedy really for the community of Watts and is actually picking up the pieces. And most importantly, not delaying or removing finally needed services to the women who most depend on them.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Any other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, first item to vote on, please. Item twenty-one, which is the committee report. Has there been any amendments that ducked out from it? Not that I caught. Okay, item twenty-one. Committee report now before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Item number twenty-two, call special by councilmember Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, councilmembers and colleagues. I just rise to one. Thank you for your support on this particular legislation. Essentially, we are sending a message to the federal government that the Homeland Security policy is something that is very necessary for Los Angeles. It's an opportunity for our viewers to write, to call their federal elected officials, let them know that this fund is necessary. We start talking about terrorism. And from my point of view, the domestic terrorism is just as valid and real for communities as international terrorism. The fact we've been moving resources to our areas of great concern, which we should be doing, but we also need to balance the needs of our neighborhoods that are being victimized by high crime, homicides, and drug dealing. And these are the issues that those areas who least participate, we need to step up. There's also policy called the community-oriented policing services, cops, and the juvenile justice program that's being looked at as being cut back from the federal funding programs. We need to let our elected officials at the federal level again to advocate for that. If it doesn't, then this other home security block program should be filling in those needs. So again, I just appeal to you. Hopefully, we can send a message to the federal officials. And hopefully, our viewers will be writing letters and making phone calls to respective elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Reyes, thank you very much for bringing this measure to our attention. What you say is absolutely correct. We cannot be in a position where we rob Peter to pay Paul. And it's never been my intent as someone who is trying to promote Homeland Security here in Los Angeles that the efforts that we need to make, that are greater than we've ever contemplated before, in any way interfere with our ability to keep our neighborhoods safe from the day-in, day-out tragedy of gang violence, of drive-by shootings, of drug dealing. And so I applaud you for bringing this to the council's attention because it is something that is under consideration in Washington. It is under consideration that supposedly the three and a half billion dollars of funding for first responders, which I'm hoping we will have a shot at obtaining some of that money here in Los Angeles. There is a potential that is going to be just shifted out of sort of the community law enforcement field. I think that would be a shame. And so I'm going to work with you. We need to step up, though. We need to do more of both here. We can't disadvantage one at the expense of the other. But at some point, something's going to have to give because those are both two extraordinarily high priorities. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Clerk, forthwith, please, on items six, twenty-six, and thirty-seven. Next item, please. Item number thirty-eight, call special by councilmember Miss Kouskis.
I don't need that matter. It's called special. I'm happy to recommend approval. And I'd also like to ask thirty-nine, go forthwith.
Thirty-nine, forthwith, please. On thirty-eight, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote. That is approved. Item number forty-four, call special. And as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard. Forthwith on thirty-eight, please. Item forty-four now before us. Council calls forward at this point Mickey Jackson.
Good day. It is out there. It's very pretty and sunny. I'm basically in favor of this motion, but I'm sorry, we need it. It's good the city's making up the deficit in these funds because it's a city department error that caused them. You know, I've been before you quite a number of times over the last few years on this issue. At least before some of you. I've stayed the same, but a lot of you have changed. Unfortunately, this problem hasn't changed much. It basically keeps going back to management issues, which we've warned and warned the council about. Now these birds have come home to roost with a lot of money. We've asked for regular detailed financial reports from the Hopewa program. And you have asked for it too in motions and not gotten it for months. May of two thousand, this resulted in a very critical state audit that showed as much as twenty-two million dollars was backlogged in jeopardizing HUD funds and creating a great deal of homelessness among clients. Still unable to get detailed reports, we have once again gone to the city comptroller's office, who is and remains and has been critical of this department's lack of reporting. Granted, the best information I now have from the comptroller's office, a great deal of this unspent money was transferred to the housing authority in the effort to get it out on the street, which was fine. But the department made a mistake between nine and twelve month money. And that is what has caused most or all of this deficit. We must have a financial report that chronicles the details of this. After all, we're spending a great deal of money without one. The comptroller's office, when I spoke to them about two weeks ago, said that an adequate report, a report they considered adequate, was still not available. I would like to ask the audit committee to consider looking at this program. We can't get a report from them. There was a proposal at one point to go out two years on Hopewa funds to lessen the deficit. But that would make people with AIDS pay for this department's mistake just over a longer period. There was originally reported as much as a four million dollar deficit. The list of questions is very, very long and the answers are not there. To have spent so much so fast after not spending. To have spent so much so fast after not spending so much for so long and end up so far in the hole is just mind-boggling. PWA should not lose a dollar of benefits to pay for poor management of HOPWA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment on item number 44. Members wishing to be recognized on item number 44. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That matter is approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items. Opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And seeing no requests, public comment period for today is closed. Mr. President, items 35 and 36 are closed session items. Did you wish to consider those at this time? Let's do housekeeping first. Motion's proposed and referred. Council members' requests, from excuse from council attendance, council members' resign requests be excused on April 5th and 19th and April 17th. The motion is required. Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Zine is excused. The desk is clear except for items 35 and 36. Well, we do have colleagues and Mr. Clerk, a matter, a motion that has been submitted initially as a rule 23, then as a rule 16. And I believe Ms. Perry once again wishes to attempt this motion to be considered as a rule 23 motion today. The chair recognizes Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, bring me the copy of this motion.
You don't have a copy.
You can have mine.
Okay, it's on the desk. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I brought this motion in today and it's been seconded by Councilmember Mark Ridley-Thomas because a number of council members several weeks ago had received a letter from someone making allegations of a meeting between police commissioner and several members of the Los Angeles Police Department. And we believe that there is a nexus between that meeting and the reappointment process and have been advised that as early as tomorrow and as late as next week, a decision will be made as to whether or not Chi-Purnar Parks will be reappointed by the police commission. So I believe and would make the argument, there is a need to take immediate action on this matter.
Okay, madam, so you're turning. Did you wish to comment?
Yes, it's my understanding that the chief of police has been, that there is a meeting scheduled on Monday. And it's a closed session discussion. I don't think that the facts support rule 23 on this issue. The comments that were allegedly made were made a week ago at least. And I don't think the council can make the findings that the need to act rose after posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, colleagues, just want to make sure we're on the same page here. Has everybody received a copy of the motion? I'm not hearing any no's. I'll assume everybody has a copy of the motion. Ms. Perry has introduced, she has spoken to the findings. It is a rule 23. To take any action today, we must make findings that are warranted by rule 23. Anybody else wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Four eyes, nine no.
Okay, findings are not made?
Okay. About, Mr. President, may I convert this motion into a rule 16? Get it posted for next week?
Okay, then let's... Accept this motion as a rule 16. And we'll agendize it next week. We'll work with your office to agendize that if that's okay. Ms. Perry, we'll work with your office to agendize.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Items numbers 35 and 36 are closed session items. Okay, in accordance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards, please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, item before us, please.
36A, a request from the city attorney to authorize $130,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 36B, request from the city attorney to approve $480,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
And 36C, a request from the city attorney to authorize $140,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Were we in open session then?
Yes, we're in open session.
He resigned. And then he came to give me back, and we were in open session.
Did we close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
36C is approved. Forthwith, please.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, did you wish to be recognized? Any announcements? Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, members of council, I just wanted a hold of a copy of the USA Weekend, which comes out in many newspapers and throughout the country. And our three Los Angeles firefighters from Station 35 in the Las Feliz district, Captain Rick Odinas and Engineer Gallagher, and then rookie firefighter Agopian was on the cover, which talks about the firefighters and how they eat together and how important it is when they cook their own meals, which they live in the firehouse, how it's important for them to get together. It also has firefighters from around the country. So it was awfully nice to see that USA Weekend, part of USA Today, is the one that showed off our Los Angeles firefighters.
Very good luck.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, confirming the actions that we took in closed session went through so fast because I really wanted to make comment about one of the settlements, which is I can do publicly because we voted on it. That is, one of the officers, the two of them were accused of planning drugs on some plaintiffs. And then we had to settle those cases. And the chief of police put in motion a sting to catch him. And when he caught them, what happens? They criticized him, the protective league. But that's been accomplished. A lot of things happened in closed session that probably don't know about. And I think it was important that we make note of the fact that when you do your job sometime around, if you're a good cop, then you get criticized for it.
Mr. Garcia.
I just wanted to announce to all my fellow council members, the city, that this morning we installed the first smart crosswalk in the city of Los Angeles. High technology imported from Belgium that no doubt one day will be made here in Los Angeles. Temple Street, if anybody goes home on Temple towards the west, right around Rosemont, just west of downtown. It senses with a camera when people are standing on the curb. And it has these bright strobe lights that hopefully will provide safety around schools. It's really, really great. And also went through without comment, but I also wanted to praise the mayor's office announced that we today increased the funding for housing for people living with AIDS today to highest level that we've seen. And I think that was a real great accomplishment. So I want to announce that, too.
If we haven't done so already, let's send item 44 forthwith. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I have two of those smart crosswalks in my district. It's not the first.
No, with this technology, sorry. With this new Belgian technology.
All right. Other announcements? Mr. Labange.
Just everyone who crosses the street, whether it's a smart crosswalk or not, should be careful because traffic safety and pedestrian safety is the things that we could prevent to remind everybody to be careful crossing the street.
The three Es, Mr. Labange?
Three Es, engineering, education, and enforcement. And there's council member Officer Zine.
Any other announcements? Any adjourning motions? Please stand. Mr. Brinson.
Okay, we got it now. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Stuart Schrontz. He was born September 4th, 1941 in Rockford, Illinois. He's a doctor of internal medicine in Minneapolis, retired to Florida, was an avid sailor, reader, friends of my daughter Nicole, my daughter Nicole's friend Gretchen, her dad. He survived by his wife Barb, daughters Gretchen and Sophia, grandson Jackson, brother Richard, and sister Claudia Sandberg. Thank you.
Any others? Ms. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I unfortunately have three that I would like us to adjourn in their memory. I request that, first of all, we adjourn our meeting today in honor of Ms. Grace Croshaw, a resident of San Pedro for the past 28 years. Gracie, as she was known to all of her friends, was devoted to serving the youth of our community, working tirelessly with many of our local organizations. She helped with the Boys and Girls Club of San Pedro. She served as the president of the San Pedro High School Lady Boosters and taught Sunday School at Holy Trinity Church. Her legacy will always be felt throughout the work of the San Pedro Youth Coalition, which was an organization that Gracie actually helped to found. She leaves behind her four children, Julie, Jason, Adam, and Marcus. And she also leaves behind three brothers, Umberto, Franco, and Philip. A funeral mass is being offered today at Mary Star Sea Church. And the Gracie Charitable Trust Fund has been established in her name. And donations are encouraged in lieu of flowers. You can contact my office if you're interested. I also ask that we adjourn our meeting today in honor of Mr. Estevan Morales, who passed away this past Wednesday. Steve Morales was a World War II veteran, serving proudly in the U.S. Navy and was a business owner in the community of Wilmington for over 50 years. He was also known for being a dedicated community activist. He was very active in our Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, the Junior Chamber. He was a member of the San Pedro Elks Club and a member of the Veterans of Foreign War Post 2967. He was actually one of the founding members of the Wilmington Boys and Girls Club. And he also served as the honorary mayor of Wilmington, one of his favorite titles. Steve leaves behind his devoted wife of 49 years, Marie, who was also his business partner. He's also survived by his three daughters, Carmen, Rebecca, and Rosemarie. And he had five grandsons, Tony, Steve, Paul, Kevin, and Jeffrey. Sadly, he was preceded in death by his sixth grandson, David. Memorial service is also being held today at St. Margaret Mary Church. And I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Steve Morales. And my final one is that we adjourn our meeting today in the honor of Clifford Coleman Baines, Jr., who was a vital part of the community of Watts, devoting his time and talents wherever they were needed. But his special passion was for our young people. He served as a volunteer youth leader in the Nickerson Gardens Public Housing Project and throughout the whole community. As a counselor, he took kids to summer camp. He took them fishing. He coached youth sports. But Mr. Baines is most honored in the community of Watts for being responsible for a beautiful mural that adorns one of the walls of the housing project, Nickerson Gardens. And this mural depicts African-American heroes in the community, Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, Jesse Jackson, Stevie Wonder, and others. And not only has this been a beautiful addition to the community of Watts, but it's actually helped to deter graffiti in that community. Mr. Baines leaves behind his mother, Christine Brown, his wife, Natty, and two sons, Clifford and Cliffin. I ask that you help honor his memory by adjourning our meeting in his honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.